This podcast was recorded on April 26th, 2021. Hello, ladies and gentlemen, and people outside the binary. Broken Class is now in session. I'm your discussion leader, Thomas Huda. Today, it's a really excellent honor to follow up my last conversation with the future school board member, Maya Rabasa, with another candidate for that office. Someone who hopes to be working alongside six other people doing some really important policymaking in the Eugene School District 4J. And my guest is Tom DiLiberto. How are you today, Tom?
I'm fine. Thanks for having me. This is my first podcast.
It's super exciting and already it's already just gonna be a lot of fun. You are somebody with a lot of experience in the classroom. That's what is a real highlight of your candidacy. Sometimes it's hard to boil down everything that a candidate is running for in like a few words and like a slogan. But I know you've taught you, a lot of your branding has to do with the fact that classroom experience counts. You bring 31 years of experience just at Monroe Middle School as a Spanish educator. And what's very impressive is that you are actually 4J District's first secondary level immersion teacher that they hired back in 1987, I believe. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
And before that, you had worked in an elementary school in some setting. And you had also worked at a high school and middle schools, predominantly in like mostly Spanish speaking schools. So you bring a range of experience. And I know that I like to start off my shows by asking just in any kind of realm, what's a controversial opinion that Tom DiLiberto has about anything?
Oh, controversial. I've been really active in, in the teachers' union. And I think then when people commonly hear of, of teacher unions, they have certain perceptions. And leaders that leaders are supposed to act a certain way. And I was the bargaining chair for EEA for long, for seven years. And I was on the, on it for a long time. But I think they expected me to be possibly, possibly more fiery than I, than I probably was. I, I, once I know the facts, I, I will plunge ahead, you know? If, if this is a righteous cause, absolutely. But it bugs me to go forward if I don't know, know everything I really need to know. And I'm not sure if that's a controversial opinion, but it's a controversial behavior. I think people, once they, they, they knew me, they go, oh, okay, I get it. And I, I do like this guy. I can trust this guy. But I think they were thinking, yeah, just tell me what, what's wrong. And yeah, let's go down to, let's go down to the Ed Center and tell them what for. And hold on, let's, let's figure this out. Let's make sure we, we know everything we need to know. And I think people in the end understood that about me.
Hey, I think that, that there's a lot of room for that. And that is refreshing. It may be controversial as it is to some people, but it's certainly, I think there's been a, I've, I'm 27 years old. So I've seen really in my adolescence, social media and how it's evolved and changed and the usefulness and the incredible drawbacks of it in the way that we conduct public, public discourse. There is a real, I think, validation and reward, maybe even just within the algorithmic context of how they structure it for people to rush to judgment, to state unequivocal points that are like, this is the absolute truth and, and I'm mad about this. Or this is the greatest thing ever, and you should all look at this now. And so I think that, um, you know, I wasn't sure how you were gonna respond to that question. I thought it was a very interesting and revealing question, uh, response you gave. And I wanted to ask you about, because this is your first time ever running for public office. I don't want to just ask, why are you running? Because I think this conversation is gonna reveal a lot of that. I think your candidacy reveals a lot of why this position matters to you and the schools really matter to you. I mean, it's been your life mission to, to, you know, improve the context of schools. But I, I wanted to ask you just as a human being, like, how does it feel to be a candidate for public office? And like the procedural element of it, the putting yourself out there in a citywide race? Like, what are the feelings coming up for you?
It exposes. I think that's the biggest thing for me. Teachers are, are used to be in front, or to being in front of, of students and, and parents for that me, for that matter. And we do get used to it, but you have to ask people for money. You have to ask people to put your name on a sign and you have to, um, you, they, they ask you constantly, why are you running? And I'm glad you're, you are asking me why I'm, why I'm running, but you're doing it in a different way. But it's, uh, it's just exposing. I'm not used to, I'm not, that's not the way I guess I was, I was brought up. Not to say that it's a bad thing to tell people exactly why you are good at this and you're good at that. You want to do that. That makes sense to me, but it's not the first, it's not my first impulse where I elbow somebody and I, and I, and I tell them, yeah, this is why, uh, you know, you should have me there. But it, it is necessary to a certain extent, because you have to explain why you'd even want this job or why you, you would waste your time. Some people actually asked me that, uh, who have a cynical view of what a board of education does. Uh, or they've seen it in action and they say, why in the world would you ever want to subject yourself to that type of confusion, treatment, um, lack of pleasure, lack of joy sometimes. I said, hold on, you know, you know, let's talk fairly about this.
Right.
And that's been maybe the hardest part, you know? Am I going to ask people for things and lose all my friends and lose respect? And that hasn't been the case. But I think, I think there, there have been some people who are surprised. Most people not, they said, no, you'd be an excellent board, uh, board member. But people who know me, the way I, I work, my personality, I think they, they are a little surprised that I would subject myself to, to this type of, uh, treatment. I'm asking for it, uh, so it's, I can't blame anyone.
Well, it seems to me that you care about the fact that something's wrong. I don't think this is a, that what's wrong within our schools is strictly 4J only. You know, you wrote a letter to the, you wrote a viewpoint article in the Register Guard. And yeah, but what you pointed to effectively was that the, the district was just nationally renowned and known as like a place to be for student centered learning, for really community based models, for, um, making, making sure that the district is meeting the actual needs of the people here. And it seems that there has been more of a top down model and an increased emphasis on standardized tests. Certainly, I remember when Nickelby, as some of us in the Ed world call it, No Child Left Behind, was, was passed by the Bush administration. Explain, you know, in lay, laypeople's terms, what's wrong and how, and what are you looking to fix here?
Well, you mentioned top down, which is a part of, um, part of my spiel each time. I, I think people don't really understand the evolution or, um, I wouldn't say demise, but what, what's happened in the last 30 something years in 4J? I, I really didn't think I would be able to get a job right off. I thought I'd sub for a while. Eventually I'll get in there. There was a international high school here and I was working in one in, uh, in San Francisco at the time. And I thought, okay, I'll get there at some, at some point. But it, it really was a city on the hill. People admired 4J immensely. But it changed through defunding, uh, at the state level. I think everybody is aware of that. It was kind of a steady decline after, after about five or six years of really, um, uh, great experience here in, in 4J. And then, um, No Child Left Behind, or as many called it, No Child Left Untested, which was a, a basic tenet of, of this whole law that, uh, was put in place. And, uh, it was just very difficult to, it, it just felt like all the control was taken away. That, that yes, we're gonna be testing you. There's gonna be accountability for X, Y, and Z. And boy, are these kids going to learn. All we need to, we just, all we need to do is make sure that the teachers know it's gonna be a test and everybody's gonna be, uh, you know, your, your grades are gonna be up on the board. And it doesn't work. It, it removed, it removes so much of why teachers go into the profession. Not that they can just close the door and they can do whatever they want to do. That's, that's not what teachers really want. They want to work with other people. They want to really delve into, um, mathematics, uh, Spanish, uh, whatever they're teaching. And, and really, really relay that to somebody else, young people. And it was taken away where people were telling us exactly how things should be taught. And it was, it was just sad. It was, it was, it was a sad part. And I still think, I think we're actually at the bottom of that. I think it's, there is certain educations that is, it's gonna go back up. People are starting to realize that they need to invest in education, that those dollars that go into schools, we, we get something out of that as, as a people. And, um, and I, I think, I, I am encouraged by that and I really want to be part of it. And I think that somebody who's, who's seen that arc, should be part of the decisions, uh, or the decision making.
Right, you saw it from the perspective of how do these policy decisions made on these Monday nights translate into the classroom? Or I don't remember what night it is. It's been a while since I've gone with COVID to the meetings. But, um, you, so you would probably be able to identify, hey, I've seen something like this happen. Or maybe we don't want to go down this road. We've tried this, um, et cetera. And I think, you know, that you're right that people are noticing more that wow, Oregon has really needed to invest in the schools again. And I know that you have done some work in terms of advocating for the Student Success Act that the legislature passed. But I think, you know, just like stepping back, right? The way that a government works, the way that our governments works, there are, there are flaws. And one of the flaws, I think, is it's similar to why infrastructure has been deprioritized on a federal level for quite some time, is because the people that pass those packages, they might not politically benefit from it because the, the rewards are reaped 10 years, 15 years, 20 years down the line. And it doesn't appear as urgent. And so it, it's hard to, to prioritize it. So, um, I'm hoping that, you know, we're able to continue in the, as a trend and not just say, you know, we rubber stamped one time, uh, this, this, you know, dollar amount to go to the schools again.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I know that, um, you know, you've also volunteered many hours towards passing school bonds in the past. And I wanted to ask you, because you are in a contested race, and I'd say a race where, there are two candidates that have a lot of support. And, um, it's, it's a citywide race. I have no idea how it's gonna go. I certainly think that you would be an excellent person on the board. But if you were to not win, how would you continue your commitment to the goals of your candidacy?
When I retired, I, uh, I had a relationship with, you know, several people on, at my school site. It was, it's a great school. Monroe Middle School has excellent teachers there. And, uh, I, I am a musician. I, I play the sax, I play the piano. Piano's not ready for prime time, but, uh, but, but I'm a good sax player, jazz sax player. And I, I considered that before, uh, before going to college. But I'm also kind of a steady paycheck type of guy too. I realized that early on that, um, it would have been difficult for musicians. But I immediately started, I, I subbed a little bit. I didn't really care for it that much. I didn't, uh, it's very difficult to be a substitute teacher, uh, guest teacher.
My girlfriend is one. She, she would say the same.
Yeah, it, it's very, it's, it's a, it's a definite skill. You have to have a large bag of tricks. You have to be extremely flexible. And I, that just wasn't the right thing for me at that time. But I decided to start, start work after a few months with, uh, with the music, the band director, the music director at, at, uh, at Monroe, a guy named Talon Nansel, who's an amazing teacher, who, uh, actually just resigned. He, um, for, for several reasons, he's, he's going to be moving. But, uh, I, I enjoyed it immensely. I was there a couple of days a week and working with, uh, uh, sixth, seventh graders, some eighth graders, and sitting down with them, um, and learning to love music. And I, I remember that part of my life so, so clearly about learning. And it was, I, just learning that I was actually good at this. I was talented at it. And, uh, you know, I, I wasn't breaking records in math and, in other classes, but that, that really turned me on. And, and all my grades got better after I got into band. And it's just so key. And there are classes, elective classes, enriching classes that so often just fall off, fall off the table. And because kids, because of standardized testing, or there's no room in their, um, they get double dosed because their, their scores dipped, or they, uh, there's, there's no room in their schedule. And I just think it's a crime that they can't pursue that dance class or that, that particular, or social studies. They miss out on that. And to take away band from me when I was 12 would have been a crime.
I mean, I for one, don't think they need to read more than maybe two or three Shakespeare texts. And there's the literary arts art, art as well. But it's like, you know, maybe Othello, maybe Midsomer, but we don't need Hamlet and the Tempest and Romeo and Juliet. And, you know? So, you know, making room for those things. And I talked with, with Maya about it, about those are the things that keep people engaged in the, in coming to school and, and having a community, you know? I, I went to North Eugene and often it would felt like the outcasts, you know, were like, the, we were, the whole school was kind of looked down on in some context, or we felt that way. And then like the, even within that school, like the, the outcasts, the people who felt marginalized, you know? We really built community in theater, drama, uh, and, uh, music. So I'm, I'm really happy that it's important to you. Often I have to, um, in these conversations, I, I don't know if you know this, but, um, when I interview people or chat with people who are like seeking public office or they're public servants, I make a point to ask them about the music that they are passionate about or that really helps them get through the day. And then I often will chat with people that are just straight up musicians. And I make a point to try to get their politics or get their opinions about public life.
So you flip it on them, yeah.
Yeah, and because I, I, that's ostensibly what this show is about. For me, it's just about things that I care about. And I'm a, I'm a rapper. I'm a, I'm a drummer, I'm a guitarist, I'm a singer. And, uh, so, you know, I want to hear, I want to hear artist names. You know, I, I know that you're, you, you, your work within, um, aiding with music education. But like, who are you listening to lately?
I'm 62 years old. So I, uh, most of the people I listen to, uh, are not young.
They're not rappers with Lil and Young before their names?
No, no, they aren't. Or, or with alternate spellings of, uh, of things that, or phonetic spellings of, um, I've got respect for them, but it's, it's, it's not my music, but I have respect for, for a lot of people. I'm, I'm usually listening to Bill Evans, mostly jazz, jazz greats, Miles Davis, Herbie Hancock. But there, you know, um, there are people like Espirito, Spalding.
She's amazing.
Yeah, who's amazing. The guitar, Brittany Howard, I, I think Alabama Shakes is a great band.
Yeah.
There, there's, there's interesting stuff. There's, there's what I like about what's happening now and has been happening for, for 10, 15 years is not so much a melding of things, but a mutual acceptance of, of genres in music. And it's, it's okay to have, you know, that type of guitar with this type of other instrument or this singer, or, um, people are looking to do different types of collaborations with other, other artists. And that, that's really, I, that's encouraging to me because it, before it wasn't like that. You, you, if you were a country singer, that's what you did. And if you played jazz, you know, that's what you did. And you just didn't cross those lines or you did it great peril. Some people did it really well. Ray Charles did it well. James Taylor's done some of that. And I, I listened to them as well, but, uh, to me, uh,
Fire and rain always gets me emotional when I hear it. And it's one of those that you hear in like restaurants and stuff. And I'm like, I've seen fire, I've seen rain. Oh, I'm just crying over my noodles. Yeah, so, um, absolutely. Well, you, you more than fulfilled the obligation to, to throw some names out there. I really appreciate that. And it's true, like, you know, when you talk about country, like Lil Nas X coming on the scene as a hip hop artist.
Oh, right, 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 right.
Having this song that like was huge on the country charts. And for a while Billboard said, you know, this isn't a country song. And the country and hip hop communities were like, what? What do you mean by that? You know? But I think one of the things that's cool is like, so, because I am a hip hop head in my heart, like hip hop, a lot of people would argue with like the SoundCloud movement and people being able to make like beats on their phones and recordings on their laptops. It's in kind of a grunge phase of where rock was in the nineties. Because previously we had what was called the bling era, uh, we now kind of call it that, the hip hop scholars do. You know, and, um, that was a lot about opulence and a lot about, about materialism and money. And there's still some of that in hip hop. But it's also like really stripping away in many of the ways that like Kurt Cobain said, I'm gonna just do four chords and some really heartfelt lyrics screamed, you know, as a, as a, because people are tired of hearing just, you know, the glam metal, like let me shred and make seven minute songs and be really, you know, um, pretentious about it. So, you know, and I think that's what, that is really cool. People's ears are ready for it. And that's what makes it so that people wanna, they hear like a, a banjo on this like hip hop song. And they're like, whoa, that's kind of cool.
There's a lot more social, there's a lot more social commentary now too. I, I think the last, last 10 years, um, I think, you know, especially in hip hop, and you would know this a whole lot more than I would, um, that it's been a conduit for that. And before I think it was a, um, it was different. I think there's more appreciation for it. There's obviously, you know, things are gonna have different subgenres as time goes on, but, um, I'm glad to see it.
Yeah. And, um, bringing it back to the school context a little bit, you know, I did read what Mr. Nansel at Monroe wrote in a letter to the editor recently in Register Guard. And he had, um, he had some, everybody just seems to have glowing words about you, man. And one thing that he said was that, um, you had, you know, been really avid as a Spanish teacher who, uh, who was at the music performances, at the band concerts and, and, um, that you had even like played at some talent shows. You know, I, I think that talent shows are just some of the coolest things ever. I hosted one or two of them back in the day. I performed in more of them than maybe people wanted me to. But like,
Were you singing or playing the guitar or?
Who knows what I did, man? I sang Being for the Benefit of Mr. Kite by The Beatles once. I did a lot of, I did a lot of odd things. I, I played the guitar solo in Bohemian Rhapsody while my, while three friends sang it badly. And, um, you know,
So you're brave, you're brave.
I guess, but the, the reason a talent show doesn't require the same kind of bravery as I've experienced in other gigs I've played, I've probably played about 30 or 40 shows as a hip hop artist, is there's just this built in incredible support of people who wink, wink, nudge, nudge. They're not always good at what they do. Like, of course, there's a, there's a range of ability and people are often really great at the piano or great at the sax. But, um, you know, and then there's just that fact that like, you see someone up there dancing and everyone is like, yeah, oh my God, it's Megan, oh my gosh, you know? Julia is out there. And then, so it's especially cool, I think, when people see like, whoa, no way, that's my Spanish teacher. Look at him. So, so those, those environments are really cool. And, and, and so I think like, you know, when you're, if you end up on the school board, when you're there, what kinds of things can you do, um, to ensure that like there are spaces for not just talent shows, but, um, you know, that feeling of community to thrive? Because it seems to me like you, you know, it's a policymaking role you're gonna be in. A lot of people think it's very detached. And I, I wonder how you are gonna like wrestle with that sense of detachment? Or does, or is it very clear? Is it very clear through line that like, yeah, the policies that I, that I vote for are gonna be able to allow for, you know, these, these on the ground, um, positive things to occur?
I, um, I, that's a pretty big question.
I'm known for those.
From, from what angle I should attack that question? I, I think, um, you know, my, I talk about the whole child and I didn't invent the term, obviously. But the whole child, if you, I, if you can, uh, point to the kids in, in our district that are fulfilling themselves, they're, 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 they know how to write. They know how to speak, uh, but they can, um, and they can, they can do mathematics. These, these are the things that, uh, people want tested or have wanted tested in the last 15, 20 years. But I, I think we really need to broaden this. And, and look, can these, can these kids fulfill all the things that they really think they can do and, and want to do? Can we give them, uh, the tools to be able to do that? I, I don't think everybody's gonna be a musician or everyone's gonna be a, a, a person who, who can dance or, or, or whatever it might be. But, uh, we have to provide all those, those channels. And, um, I, I think we need to invest more, not for that sake, but, uh, we've just cut down so much of what kids, or what gives kids joy to keep them in classes, to, to feel good about themselves, to feel good about their teachers, to feel good about what we're doing. And, um, uh, it, it makes me think of COVID, you know? I, I think we were ju, right at the bottom and we were, you know, we passed the SSA, the, the Student Success Act and things, uh, we were feeling pretty optimistic. And then COVID came and just, it was just a gut punch. Like everything that we had, you know, we were starting to get rolling. People were starting to understand, yeah, maybe we, if we do put money into this, we'll, we'll get something out of it. This makes sense to us. And then it said, no, hold off. And now we can't do anything for a year. And I get, I totally get why. I'm not someone who's saying, yeah, we should have had our kids in there in November or something. I, I understand the safety issue. I, I totally get it. But I'm just, I am chomping at the bit to be able to, to start again to, I, I hope we don't lose any of the momentum that we, we started to have right before COVID hit. Right, that's, that's my biggest wish.
That's a really good point. And, um, you know, I've paid my bills by working in hotels. And so the hospitality industry was super ravaged by COVID. One of the things that I think is a challenge about, you know, the impact it's had on schools is that, it's, it's an issue that has affected just every element of whether it's the economy or just communities and how people communicate. Like, it's been so wide ranging that it's hard to, to imagine like a, a prescription that will effectively alleviate like all of those different issues, you know? So it kind of feels like, well, so many other times too, like educators are left to fend for themselves. You know, they're left to try to pick up the pieces. So, hey, maybe you got out officially of, out of the profession at the right time. I don't know, but, um,
I, I don't know. I, I do feel, I feel really bad about that because I have, obviously have quite a few teacher friends. I know quite a few administrators as well and classified folks. And I feel really, really bad that I got out of it before that. And it's been such a struggle for all of them.
I can't imagine teaching Spanish. Like, you know, how, doing that on Zoom, it's just so, and then you have to compete with everything else that, that clamors for young people's attention when they're using their devices too. I mean,
I know, all day and all night. I, I'm seeing some of it because I observe, um, I observe student teachers for, uh, the University of Oregon. So I have five, uh, four, uh, world language teachers, one German, two French and two Spanish. And it's eye opening. They're doing an incredible job. I'm so proud of them. But what they're up against is incredible. All, all the screens are off, you know? The, in secondary, um, most, almost all the screens are off. In elementary, you get more engagement. Kids aren't answering questions. You're, you're just shouting in to avoid and you's, you know, you gotta keep the, the smile on your face. You've gotta keep the energy up. Engagement is everything. Cause all those student teachers are, are really interested in the wellbeing of those kids. It's, it's just clear to me. And it's such, it's, they're just wrestling with it every day. And it, it's defeating, but, um, they are bravely battling. And they're just doing a terrific job. And I feel the same way about the practitioners in the buildings, you know, uh, district wide. It, it's been so hard.
Yeah.
Yeah, Spanish, you, you say Spanish, but like everything, uh, how, how do you have a, a discussion when you can only hear one voice at a time?
Yeah.
You can't see faces. You can't see if someone's getting it or they feel like they, you know, they really want to be called on.
Right.
It's tough.
It is tough. It is tough. Um, I was a student teacher for a while, uh, in high school, social studies at Teachers College, Columbia in New York City. And um, you know, I felt, you know, one thing that I'm moving into is adult education. I'm gonna get my masters in that and at Southern Oregon online, starting this fall. And I'm, I'm, I just realized that's, that's a more appropriate place for me with where the kinds of people I wanna teach and, and what I feel comfortable doing. But uh, when I was in the classroom, Tom, I felt this tension of just the difficulty of grading and like specifically giving people failing grades for things. Um, and that was in a pre-COVID normal context. I guess I was insecure or felt like I didn't have the authority to do that, or this is gonna be really hurtful. And you know, I'm, I'm half Japanese. And we had a real culture at home of like, oh, I got a B once and I got, eh, I got roasted for it, you know, by my mom. So like, so knowing that I'm how it's causing that impact, um, and then there's just that real frustrating like, well, duality between like, you know, the, the, appropriately, like the teachers that are the, maybe, maybe the highest quality or the best are the teachers who are willing to be really tough on students, but make sure that they have the tools to succeed. While with that, with that toughness in place, a teacher who is just known as someone who will give you an A, no matter what you turn in, might be beloved, but might not be really doing the job. So I just feel like within a Zoom context or in this distance learning context, I would feel extra chat like, uh, I don't know, hesitant, like, like difficult. I feel like it'd be hard to like, give students those, those failing grades. I can imagine telling a student, you failed my course, you know, like that didn't even meet. Like where we weren't even, it didn't even exist as a group of people in a room, you know, like that's, that's hard.
Right. And all the, but there are so many conversations before you get to that very sad point. And it has happened for me. But there are lots of uh, conversations before that, you know, hey, you know, you, you haven't turned in any work or you didn't really turn in the second draft of, of what we were talking about and um, you know, calls home or I talked to, to a parent, uh, to see if we can intervene. Or we find ways where the, where the student can come in and, and work with me and those are, aren't taken. And then you try to find out why, you know, is it a transportation thing? Is, you know, is, is a kid getting breakfast? Um, what's, what, what's going on? Does the, does the student not have the skills that he or she was supposed to, you know? It, it's a long conversation, several conversations before you get to that point, but I have been at the point where I have given someone a failing grade and it's, it's heartbreaking.
Um, Tom, is universal access to free breakfast something you support and/or is it a priority for you as a board member?
I think it's, I think it'd be really smart. I, I, I think they've done it in schools and it, it really makes sense to me. Uh, there's so many kids who, and I've seen them at, at the middle school level where uh, it's clear that this is, this, this is the only meal that they have all day. Um, and some kids, uh, like on grading days, they sometimes offer food and their kids in line there. Uh, you know, they don't even have to be there. It's a grading day, but they count on that. Um, so they, they'll get their lunch and they'll get their breakfast and that's, that's it. It's uh, when they get home, it's, it's a crapshoot whether they're, they're going to get any more food. You know, weekends were, were, were difficult, I'm sure for, for those kids. And they're more than we, uh, than we think they are, there are. So I think it'd be a good idea to provide that across the board.
Awesome. Um, one thing that I, you know, learned, uh, this is, maybe you'll demystify this term, but the de-professionalization of teaching is an issue that is talked about sometimes. Um, and basically my understanding of that is like, over time, teachers have become increasingly micromanaged. The greater emphasis on standardized tests, less freedom to, you know, be the professionals that they certainly are uh, in the classroom. And um, what's your perspective on that? It seems also that, you know, teachers have less time over time to collaborate with others. You know, you were saying it's not just that um, teachers should be able to do whatever they want. Teachers tend to wanna work well with, with their other teachers and maybe they don't have time to collaborate enough. So um, what do you think about this?
Well, I, I think that the people that started this movement and are continuing or trying to continue this movement um, don't really understand why teachers go into teaching. Um, that I don't think they really, they might say, well, yeah, I know a teacher or uh, you know, one or two. I don't think they really understand what happens uh, from our, our, our viewpoint, why people go into the profession. And I, I loved, I loved Spanish. I loved English. I loved uh, uh, social studies and those are the areas that I focused on. And I, I, I wanted to explore them more. I wanted to share what I knew and explore with my kids um, to, to find out more. And doing that was just the, the most joy I've ever had. It, it was, it was why I went into teaching. Um, and I think the people who don't understand teachers think think that, as I said before, I think I alluded to this, that once we close the door, then we can do anything we want and we could go in any direction we want. And that's not how it works. We're, we talk to our peers all the time. Uh, we talk to administrators, we, we talk to people across, um, across districts to, to figure out what they're doing. What, what should we be doing? What do kids really need? We, we, we look at research, we talk to experts. This is why we went into this, not so
It wasn't for the money?
Yeah, that was it. It was the money. I, I did want a steady paycheck, a, a steady low pay, paycheck, especially for the first, first half of my career, but um, but it, that was the reason. I, I love learning. I love learning with other people and I wanted to get better. And I don't think enough people in the last twenty years really understood that about why teachers do what they do. And when I say teachers, I mean educators broadly, not just uh, people who were in the same path as I did, or people that are classroom aides, uh, there are administrators uh, who do this because of the love they have for it. And um, it, it was, it was sad to see that happen. And, and as I said before, I think we're starting to go in the other direction and um, I want to keep pushing in that direction.
Right on. Um, one thing that uh, I wanna give you credit for is that you haven't shown uh, a hesitancy to speak up when uh, issues of equity are, you know, center stage or, you know, are, are not considered thoroughly. And, and a recent example of that is um, I think you understand that um, you know, this may be a volunteer position to be on the school board. Um, but it's a certainly an important position and people can, um, what the words that a school board member says matter. And you were not quick to clarify your position about some rhetoric about unions that um, was not very, it didn't seem to me carefully spoken and, and in many ways was not um, a very fair um, comparison that a board member made. And um, I'll just say that it was Mary Walston and she uh, has been on the board for quite some time, has been serving for in, in that capacity for quite some time. She is not up for reelection, so you would be seeking to join her. And it, she, she was seeking to make a point where she uh, compared uh, a method that the union was um, employing to try to retain uh, teachers of color. Um, and through the seniority policies that they have, comparing that to um, the, the police unions and being a good old, good old boy network, specifically the police unions um, that were trying to protect Derek Chauvin who murdered George Floyd. That was not a very, a lot of people in the education community did not like that. I did not like that. And um, you know, what was that like for you to experience that? And what was, what was your perspective on that? And uh, your thoughts on um, the union in general?
I um, eh, I've been to so many board members, uh, board meetings, board meetings in my life. Uh, and I, I've seen some things that I, uh, people said that I um, didn't agree with. Things that enraged me and that was in the, the latter category. Um, to equate people who were defending the killer of, of George Floyd to uh, a teacher union, a teachers' union that was trying to hold on to seniority. And I, I just, I, I, at, at first, you know, I, I think that I, 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 I realize that I've said some things in my life that I, I regret as well, things that came out wrong. I, I understand that. Uh, but it, but this was um, beyond the pale and, and
It seemed revealing to me.
It was revealing to me. I think what was said, what, what was what has been thought for a very long time amongst certain members of the board. That there's this suspicion of the, of the teachers' union, that it's only out for uh, protecting themselves, uh, only out for, for the money. Um, that it's not a democratic institution. It's what she thought a good old boys' network, which is laughable most. Well, I, I, it's laughable for so many reasons. I can't, I can't even start. Uh, but it was revealing because I know there are people that uh, that push that in Salem, that, that notion that teachers are out just to protect their own. And uh, I think that it's a cynical attempt, what's happening right now with SB two thousand and one. To, to, to bust a union, to take away seniority rights uh, by waving a flag of equity, which I, I think is the most, it, it just really, really bugs me. Um, and I, I hope that goes away, but uh, I, unfortunately, I, I, I don't, I think that they're reworking the bill and they're trying to come up with maybe a watered down version of it, but I think it, this is, this is just a horrible piece of legislation that needs to go away.
Um, well, for a moment then, could you explain, cause I really resonate, we could talk for a long time about whether it's performative activism or people being able to, you know, or people who advantageously like to lift up equity and diversity uh, in their rhetoric. And then the policies are not really going to support those communities or maybe are, are not the, that's not the chief priority of them. So what is this instance with SB two thousand and one? Is that what you said?
Well, the, 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 there is a problem. It's, it has been a problem for a long time that I believe there's about ten percent of the teacher ranks are, are persons of color. While the students, uh, I think, um, make up something like thirty-eight percent. It's, and it's been way off for a while and it's definitely a problem. Students need to see, um, they need to see people that look like them, um, in the teacher ranks, administrator ranks. And we haven't been doing a good job of it. I, I think that um, there are several reasons. Um, most people of, uh, teachers of color, uh, nationwide complain of some real real responsibilities that are expected of them that aren't put upon uh, white people. That, oh, you're, you're, you're a person of color. So therefore you understand, um, you know, these kids. So we're gonna give you these clubs and you're gonna be in charge of this. And hey,
You gotta mentor this student. You gotta educate everybody about your experience, which tell them about your trauma, please, four periods per day or what, et cetera.
Right. In addition to the, the, the math classes that are, you're teaching and you also have to do uh, drama after school and all, all these other things. Um, that's a real, that's a real drain on, on people. They, they, I, I totally get that. Uh, on the other hand, and there, there are pieces of the, of the pipeline to, to get to get persons of color into the teacher ranks that are, that are broken along the way uh, that need to be repaired. And I think we could do a good job growing our own. You know, there, there are kids who would be terrific teachers if we had a mechanism in our own district to encourage them to, and, and get them um, what they need to be able to get to be teachers. I think that would be, um, I, 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 I saw this in my, my students, uh, along the way and I, I did my uh, I did the most I could to encourage them without scaring them. I think they know the teachers don't make a ton of, of money and, and then they see us with uh, uh, stacks of papers that we take home. And I think they understand um, that it's, it's a difficult job. Um, but I, I think that would be a really effective means of getting kids or kids of color to be teachers of color. And the second thing is mentoring. And mentoring, I think, helps everybody, eh, eh, and perhaps even more so, uh, persons of color. Um, to, to get them uh, paired with veterans, people who know the, the pitfalls in teaching. And to get them to be better teachers and help them, especially for, for the, during those first five years. And we had a pretty robust program years ago, but that went by the wayside and that really needs to come back. Uh, just for all teachers. I, I think it's forty percent of all teachers that uh, um, quit after five years, which is an astounding number and very scary. Um, and it's, I think it's worse for BIPOC folks. So.
Yeah. I wouldn't be surprised if that was the case on that for BIPOC folks. And um, you know, I can only speak to my own perspective as one little slice of the, of the pie or one little part of the tomato in the mixed salad, whatever analogy of being a BIPOC individual, but I can say, yeah, I was just telling my girlfriend, like, you know, melting pot is like a kind of a double edged sword. It, it's meant to say, everybody, everybody comes together and creates this soup, but then you're actually melting away your own distinct identity to be a part of that. And that's assimilation. Whereas a mixed salad, everyone retains their components, but contributes to this thing that's, that's much more, more wonderful together. Um, and so what I was gonna say is that, you know, I can understand, you know, my mother, um, you know, was a, is an immigrant to the US. She came from Japan. Um, and actually, weirdly enough, in the eighties, my dad was an adult educator of English and that's, and she was his student, which is actually how they met. Um, and um, maybe it was a different time then. Ja- Japan's also different than here. And um, so, um, what happened eh, what I'm trying to say is that like, you know, she never got to go to college. So um, for me to make the decision to be a teacher is something I got some support with, but also a lot of, there's a lot of pressure and pushback in terms of, you know, if you're gonna be a first generation college student, which my dad went to college, he did go to the U of O, so I'm not really a first generation, but let's say somebody is and you're gonna take out a bunch of loans. Or you get this amazing gift of like, great grant aid and scholarships from people that wanna see maybe students, BIPOC students succeed well. Well, if we don't have a, a decent teacher pay, you know, and I don't think Oregon is particularly good in that. Um, how are you gonna convince those people that that investment of the, of the bachelor's and potentially the master's degree, et cetera, is gonna be worthwhile? So one of the things I saw on, on your website as a priority was, you know, class sizes and reducing class sizes, which we know is maybe one of the greatest indicators of, you know, effective uh, learning. And you know, do we have the resources? Do we have the ability? I know this is hard to have better teacher pay and lower class sizes, which means that you're hiring more people. Um, that seems like a intractable challenge.
It's, it's, it is very expensive. Um, and I, I know this, anybody in teaching knows this. Um, you know, I, I was the bargaining chair for the union and it was a very difficult balance because uh, everybody was complaining uh, of high caseloads, if they were a specialist or a special educator. Um, or class sizes they were dealing with. I had in, in excess of forty, forty students oftentimes.
Um, in one period?
Eh, yeah, in one period. No, definitely. You know, it happened several times where I'm just cramming them in.
Assembly.
Yeah, exactly. And there, those bubbles happen to all kinds of teachers all the time. Um, but it, just the, you know, what, we're trying to bargain contracts. People are complaining bitterly and they should be about class size and caseload, ca- caseload. But at the same time, they need to pay the bills. They need to pay off those college loans that you just mentioned. Um, and I, I, it was very, very difficult to maintain that balance. But to just sit there and, and do what some forces were saying, you know, what about the kids? Don't you, you know, uh, the class size, that's the most important thing. And we would absolutely agree, but at the same time, if you don't pay the teachers what they're worth or try to approximate that, you're going to have even more leave the profession. And that delicate balance was extremely difficult to maintain.
I appreciate your honesty about that, you know, running for office and saying, yeah, that's a really challenging balance to, to take on. Um, and there, another challenge that, that Um, and there, another challenge that, that, that could be um, something that the board takes on uh, in your first term, if you were to be sworn in, is um, you know, some people say, hey, it's time for the board to go in a new direction. But you're also going to be looking at some of the most experienced board members who really know the role well, um, are not going to be a part of the board. Yeah. Anne Marie Levis will not be there. Jim Torrey will not be there. Um, potentially your opponent Judy Newman, who has been only on, on the board for one term, will not be there. And so there is excitement in seeing a group of fresh faces and people who, you know, I would say, yeah, Gordon Lafer, Martina Shabrin, you know, uh, I'll shout out Laurel O'Rourke, Kamaya Rabasa and you, you know, potentially um, people who will all be within their first term, starting this July. Um, and um, do you, do you anticipate a challenge in terms of, let's say, getting things done? Um, given that relative, um, I guess, um, I, I don't want to say lack of experience, cause how, who am I to talk about 27 year old podcaster? You guys have lots of experience in the things that you do, but um, within the role, relatively little experience.
I, I understand that. Um, there is value, uh, definitely there is value to having experience, experience on the board. But that has to be balanced with what the goals are, where we want to take this district. I, I think change is absolutely needed. Uh, I, I work with, I have worked with people um, either on, on my side of, my side of the table and on the other side of the table. You know, when I was uh, bargaining contracts with the union, with the teachers' union, we tried to assemble a pretty diverse group. People who had different views on what was needed and what their experiences were, what their expertise uh, was. And um, I, I, I felt comfortable with them. Uh, not every one of them saw eye to eye, saw, saw the diff, the uh, the issues eye to eye with me, but I, I felt like I was able to work well with people with whom I had differences. And I know they're going to be uh, there's going to be some friction with, but it's, it's always like that. Any, any body uh, governing body has that issue, has that, that piece to it. And I don't shy from it. I, I think it's, I think it'll be, it'll be fine. I, I, I really don't see that conflict like, oh, well, you, you said before the election that you weren't comfortable with this policy. Or you thought you were going, the, the board was going too far in that direction. I, I don't really see that as a, as an impediment to, to going forward.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Right on. Um, well, I'm, I'm glad you have that attitude. I think it's sincere. Uh, you've been generous with your time. We had one or two times where it cut out a little bit on Zoom because of my wifi. So hopefully I'm able to stitch it together in a way that um, is uninterrupted. And people know that I'm not cutting out content. I just, we had a, we had a little issue where my wifi router just likes to, to stop.
There was no shouting match.
No, no, at least not yet, because I do want to ask you more directly about one of the last one or two questions. We talked about equity in general, but um, you know, there's a couple of things. There's, there's um, you know, we, everybody has perspectives on um, the summer of 2020 and, and the George Floyd protests. And I just think that it would have been, um, I don't even really want to ask directly about that. We can get there if we want, but what I want to ask you about is maybe almost an elephant in the room about um, people are touting, uh, it's an unofficial slate of candidates. You, O'Rourke, Rabasa, people that are really bringing uh, different perspectives and that do represent diversity and inclusion and equity. And you know, you've got this immense experience as a Spanish educator. But uh, um, you know, you uh, I believe you would identify yourself as a white man and in your sixties. And um, where has um, you know, your white privilege factored into like, at any point in your, in your teaching Spanish? Like um, where has that um, affected like your perspective on teaching, you know, the Spanish language in the past? And potentially like um, teaching Latinx students, like languages of their own, that their own families speak? Like I'm, I'm just curious about what that's been like.
I am a white guy, uh, and I, I, I look like a white guy. I get that. It's throughout the time I've, I've been able to speak Spanish and I, I learned it in uh, school. And also I spent time in, in Mexico with a family, uh, two different stints. And I, I worked hard at it, but when I go to the uh, Latin American countries, or if I go to Spain, people look at this white face and, and, and they assume that I, I don't speak Spanish and they usually speak English to me. And it's happening in the United States, you know, scores of times where families to see me and they immediately start speaking English. It's kind of a, a reflex and I get that. And it, I, I feel so good that I'm able to um, to communicate in the language that's much easier for many families that I've worked with in my career. It's really been, really been helpful. I, I know, I, I also know that um, since I don't look like someone who might be speaking Spanish, that there's, there's a little bit of a divide. It might take a little longer uh, for someone to uh, invite me in, in, in the figurative sense. And, and I, I get that. It's completely human to feel that. But I, I've been comfortable with it and, and I, as I said before, I, I, I felt, I feel like, you know, it's a gift for me. I've, I've learned language well. My accent's good. Uh, I don't, I don't speak it perfectly. But um, it's, it's brought so much interest and joy to my life. Um, and then that's why I, I teach foreign language or world language. Did I answer your question?
I think it's a good question whether or not you answered my question. I, I, well, yeah, you shared, you know, your perspective on that, which is what I'm, what I'm asking. And, and um, I also just do want to say, Tom, that like um, when I, so I am a 4J grad, right? And we talked a little bit about BIPOC teachers and um, representation within the classroom. And um, you know, I didn't have my first um, black teacher until there was this flex P E at Kelly Middle School that was like once every week for only like 12 weeks or something. And it was Mr. Warren and he was, he was excellent, but in terms of an academic, and I'm not talking down to P E teachers. I'm just saying that within an uh, I guess, an academic context, Jennifer Skirlock, ninth grade at North Eugene, who I think has endorsed you.
Yeah, she's awesome. She's an amazing teacher. Yeah.
A really amazing human being. Yeah, absolutely. And um, you know, I guess that it's very apparent. Obviously, the black community is not monolithic and not everybody would agree on, on any given thing necessarily. But one thing that's loud and clear to me is that we need to better understand the experiences of our black communities here in Eugene. And that's something that um, you know, how are we going to take? If it's the momentum of the last summer and the continual conversations around Black Lives Matter and that movement and that, the truth of that statement that has not been honored within our, our school district, our community. How are we going to move forward with um, listening better and implementing better policies?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I think, and you were getting to that before, I think that the inclusion or the, the appearance of Maya and Laurel uh, are, and I, I, I really believe they're going to win these, it's, uh, these races. I think that's going to be an incredible um, shot in the arm to, to the board. To have a perspective of, uh, we haven't had a, a, an African American on the board for many years. Um, I remember when we did, but it's been a, a very long time. And to, to include two women of color on the, on the board is, is going to change so much. Just haven't had that uh, that perspective. I know Ivanka Medina was on there for, for a couple of years and uh, but again, that was, that was a short time and, and it's just been too long. So that perspective, especially at this time where, where our nation is actually starting to understand and recognize things. There's so, such a long way to go, but um, this is such a critical time and to have them included is, is huge.
Right on. Well, um, the last thing I'll just ask you is um, you know, what do people, what, that we haven't talked about yet, or just, what do people need to know about your candidacy? Because they do have, a lot of people are, this is a hard decision for them to make. And I'm not saying that you should directly contrast yourself from your opponent. I think that there's probably a great deal of mutual respect that, within the race. Um, but I just want you to have the floor and to say, you know, um, and I, and I want to tell people that they should certainly go to TomDlibertofor4j.com. It'll be linked in both the, the audio description and the video description. Check it out. The front page is uh, immediately, there's an Espanol um, translation of all of the issues on the front page that you're, that you're, are your priorities. But I'll give you the floor and say, you know, what, why you want people to vote for you, I guess.
Yeah.
It's corny. I didn't want to ask it like that, but that's the simplest way.
It, it, it usually boils down to that. Um, I, I think the whole show, I, I appreciate your approach in that you don't ask the questions exactly like the forums. This has been much more, um, it's much more, more fun and um, I think the format is more revealing of a person than some of the forums um, that I, that I've been to. I, I, I respect Judy. I don't know her personally uh, very well at all. Um, I respect her. She, she provides her, Easy Care has done a, a great job for so many families in this, in this uh, in this area. And uh, she knows her stuff, absolutely. However, I, I think that, and this is oftentimes what I tell people. I believe that what I can bring to the board aligns better to what K-12 education is about. And having worked for such a long time in K-12, uh, this is almost 39 years if you include when I was in college, I was a, a classroom aide in an elementary school, I taught five years in California and then 31 uh, years here. I just think the, the arc of my life, the arc of my career fits really well. And especially the timeliness of it. I think uh, right at this time where, and I've alluded to this before, where I think we can, our, our community, our nation is starting to understand uh, uh, that investment in education is so important. And uh, and bringing everybody forward, not just a few and, and this is kind of a, a discussion on equity, but you know, asking those second questions and those third questions to people who've been marginalized. That's what is really going to bring everybody forward. I'm, I'm glad we have an equity lens or an equity tool, but a uh, you know, a, a paper that explains how we're going to do it, isn't really going to get it done. We, it's a great first start. But as I said before, finding out why, why uh, certain groups aren't engaged with 4J or for, for that matter, any uh, school district is just so important. And that's what I think that I, I'd like to, to devote a good portion of my, my work uh, if elected toward that. I, I met a guy named Alex Reynam, who is on La X. He's a, he's a broadcaster. And he's working with the district, or not the district, the city of Eugene on this. And he really impressed me by uh, explaining that so many ways that the message of 4J, 4J or any district does not get to certain communities in the district. And it just made, made total sense. It's not like he had this easy answer. In fact, it's actually difficult. It's not going to be easy. It's going to require quite a bit of work, but how can we do this any other way? There's no machine. There's no tool or lens that's going to do it for us. I'm willing to put in that work and uh, and that's why I'm running.
Hey, I think that's wonderful. I think that um, this is not something that is a stepping stone towards a gubernatorial run for you. I think that you shy away from, even though Kate Brown is term limited, oh, people are talking, who's going to be the next? Yeah. And so that's, that's something that I love about you, about Laurel, about Maya. It is 100% about serving. I think there's, I think that it doesn't make, I think you probably like the fact that like, oh, you, you see a yard sign, oh, somebody's supporting me. That's, that's an honor. But I don't think that you're in it just because you like, you love your name in that pretty font on that blue sign and you want people to know it.
That was very cringey for me. It, it's still weird just to see like, oh God, was it apple on it? Really? An apple? Could you, you know, do you have to have an apple? Yes, you have to have an apple.
All right. Well, it communicates a lot and it's, it's part of the 4J logo. So we're sneaking in there.
Yeah.
All right, Tom. Well, I wish you all the best and I really appreciate your time. Um, and thanks, everybody for listening.
Thank you so much, Thomas. This has been great. I've enjoyed it.